Um, you know, it's down in all the, you know, double and asking.
What?
Yeah.
Work for you or what? Oh, right.
Well, you know. Yeah, so, and I, I don't, I don't think you can roll back to play which really is a long time.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's.
That's it. It is a full night.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like a very simple.
Yeah. It's a single board.
He's either up, he's down.
Wow. Yeah, that's good. Well, that's great. Can you hear that? That's success.
So, so, Bill, does that have anything?
It, you'll, it heals after the powerfully, if you want more than that, I, I don't think you can.
Believe that goes away.
Like, that's a wonderful one.
If we'll come before the playing board for a, um, it's called a mag or it's called, it's a, uh, advice, maybe.
Advice.
You give input like, hey, if you thought of this, there could be something that you haven't thought of, but you guys.
Yeah.
Well, you know, everyone has a dream, we're quite, uh, here, and they can hardly grow good grass in the yard, so. In my mind, this is a good practice. That's what it is.
Would, would I manage that time?
That's a kind of a thing of a business or something.
We, we will, yeah. There are recording it, so it's gonna be linked.
Yeah.
Are you?
No, no.
Is there anyone that has access for the party?
Yes.
Well.
Looks like we got some.
And only.
That's corporate squat. Yeah.
That's.
Coming to be how it informs that.
What guy? Oh, yeah. That could be the challenge, so you vote.
And that was the same place they were.
See my?
I do that. I, my, what's the last one? Did they fix the?
The last one is, you mean the bell problem?
Yeah.
The stone was, um, extended. And she's. You.
Oh, you didn't see that? That's the most important.
So what does that mean?
That's the Dunbar area agreement. It's almost been ten years. And that, to me, that's the most important. We want to do it for. You don't have that, you don't do anything else. She was supposed to sit.
That's.
You didn't hear that? I read that line. Hey, well.
Robert, how you doing?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Bobby, how are you doing?
Here you are.
Awesome. Last week, it was, it came in Saturday, but Saturday. And Sunday.
Yeah, there's that one.
Certainly.
I've never heard of it. They don't like that, so I'm like, there it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're just like. Oh, yeah, nice. This is excellent. I want all, like, seven hundred. So, it's. But, so, like, the, the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Um, last year, your, uh, your, just to.
Risking, like, people risked, like, once, uh, once, it's a big thing. So, TV on, focusing to. There are, uh, pretty few. I thought this was probably a challenge, so I'm sure this is my boss's.
I have two.
Yeah, yeah.
Stop with getting it, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
We actually. Hey, chief.
How are you doing?
What is it, Bob?
I started working the sandwich.
You won that?
No, you bought it.
Oh, you bought it. That's great.
That's a good problem.
And you gotta, you just sit in the listener. You sit in the listener, like, working a show. We'll talk.
We might not end up.
You're very glad. How to get Bob Dylan. Free Bird. Free Bird was the song that went by my wife because we, that was our graduation, so. So, as you watched out for graduation, Free Bird is playing. All right, you ready for this?
Yeah.
It'll be on TV. Number one.
Yeah.
Martin, you are here so far.
I think it's Mike starting to go out today, so.
Brian, sorry.
She had a.
Frankly, you know, so many people.
Yes. I see. So we had to rent a view.
I could have thought.
Yeah, my daughter.
Uh, let's get going, because this is gonna be a long presentation, so, um, you might as well get to it. Uh, is this like our usual meeting? Should we call it to order and?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, calling the meeting to order. Uh, I think it's just after six o'clock. Is there a flag? We can do the pledge. Yes, there is. Uh, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag. This is a bond hearing. I'm, I'm gonna go up and get a little presentation and, uh, we'll go for that. Take any questions afterward. For those that don't know, I'm, my name's Bryce Larrabee. I'm chairman of the school board, and, uh, I've been one of the folks leading the charge in the turf field project that, uh, you folks are here to talk, hear about today. Um, I think one of the common misperceptions in the community about this turf field is that we readily admit there's no perfect time. It's not free. If it was free, that's their perfect time, right? But it's not free, and it'll never be free. But in our opinion, this time right now is as good as it's going to get, and it's now or never. And, you know, the voters, some folks in town, there's no question, they're not going to want to support this, uh, because it's not free. But there are other folks who have waited a long time for a project like this to be presented to the town. Um, from what I understand, it goes back to as far back as nineteen ninety-nine, that folks in town have been talking about a want and a need for. About a turf field. Um, I know the Bo School Foundation has notes in their files from two thousand nine. Um, there was a, a proposal put together by the former. I don't know the date on that, but I think it was maybe two thousand ten. Um, I was a member of a town committee called the recreational needs committee in twenty thirteen, and this was one of the issues we looked at. And I was on a member of a, another committee that looked at the turf fields in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And at least in those, those last two instances, the ones that I was involved in, uh, in both instances, a big sum of money that could put us in a position to, to make this happen. And so in both instances, uh, the project just, it, it, it never materialized. So, that is what, um, kind of brings us here to today. But there's a big passion out there of a number of folks in town who want a turf field. And I should tell you that I don't have a huge, uh, personal vested interest in it. I've, I've got a kid in college. My daughter will maybe play her spring of her senior year on it if it came together. My, my youngest is a football player, otherwise doesn't really have any sports he would play on it either. But, uh, there are a lot of people, I can tell you, I know one family personally who have in their will that if their immediate family passes away, their entire estate is to go to create a turf field in Bo. Um, there are people like that in town, and, uh, there is a passion. So, when it comes to like this particular school board, I'm also a member of the BAC, and both of those organizations, they have an attitude of when people come to them and they ask like, hey, can we do something? Those organizations both say, let's see if we can figure out a way to make it happen. And that's sort of kind of how this came about. Um, can we see if there's a way to make it happen? It's kind of, I guess, lucky in some respects of how it did transpire to reach this point. Uh, what happened and how I got involved was when COVID came about, um, there was an article in the Concord Monitor about the dairy field, not dairy, I'm sorry, Deerfield School System, and how Deerfield was doing creative things with outdoor learning in order to keep the kids in school and not at home. And that caused me to consistently ask Dean and Dwayne and some of the folks like, what can we do to get more outdoor learning involved? How do we do more outdoor learning in our community? A big factor of that has been the Wi-Fi and the lack thereof in the outdoor spaces in our community. And so that sort of was in the, the backdrop of, of what had happened. And then when the COVID relief funds started coming in, um, actually, it was Dean also had mentioned that several schools out in the Midwest had used their COVID relief funds to build turf fields. And that's not what we did. We used our funds for, um, developing a math program, literacy, some computers, PPE, stuff like that. But I thought, well, that, that's kind of interesting. And then what really changed it was the Dunbar and area agreement, which is being renegotiated at this time. It'll be on the, on the school meeting in March. And in the course of the process of looking at that, um, we determined that there was a different interpretation of a, of a provision in there. And, um, as a result, Dunbar owed us eight, four hundred thousand dollars that they didn't, hadn't paid up till now based on the interpretation of the contract. And so they agreed to repay that money. And to me, that's when all those things came together for me, and I was like, four hundred thousand dollars, that's a, that's a pretty nice starting point for a turf field. And kind of took on a life of its own from there. So, uh, that's kind of the backdrop of how we get to where we are here today. Um, and as you'll see here in the, the presentation, we do call it Built by Community for a Community because we have a number of moving pieces to it. It'll be easy if we just said, hey, town, pay three million dollars and bond us, take it or leave it. Instead, we've tried to creatively come up with a lot of different ways to offset the tax, taxpayer payments. And it's really focused on pay to play. I mean, you know, we have high school fees coming in, those kids will have to pay money, the BAC, Bo Soccer Club, those kids will be paying money. It's trying to have those that have a direct impact have to pay more than those who do not. And that's kind of why there's so many moving pieces to kind of how we get to where we do. So for those who don't really know much about artificial turf, um, I always think back about the Bad News Bears, uh, Breaking Training and the episode of the Astro Down when I think of turf fields. But you think back to the nineteen seventies is, is when it came about. And basically, it's, it's a replacement for, for natural grass. Um, in the course of this process, I've learned quite a bit about turf fields. And, uh, as you can see from the slide, the, the technological advancements have been pretty significant, uh, to the point where now they don't use any, any of the chemicals or things that they used to. They have lots of cushion beneath them. There are differing degrees of, of how much cushion you put underneath those turf fields. Um, I can tell you, West High School, for example, used to be like, felt like it was cement, and you would go to South Heagan, and it was like, uh, like a WWE wrestling mat. It was so cushiony in between. So there are lots of different degrees, but obviously with technology and advancements, um, we would be looking at a, at a, at a state-of-the-art one. Um, there are some misconceptions about it, you know, bad for the environment, uh, unsafe for kids. Again, these go back because of, you just saw the older types of materials and things that they used to use. Um, the chance for injuries is not based on what the prop, the current fields are like. There are, you'll see studies that say both ways. I certainly would tell you that if the turf field goes in at the middle school, there, there is no one that could say that that's a more dangerous field than what's there currently. Um, but probably the most interesting from this is, is the light. Uh, it's really amazing that that's, the picture up there is, is legit. I mean, you could be fifty feet nowadays from a stadium and, and you will be standing in the dark. It's not like it used to be with the, the light noise that would spread everywhere. So, the middle school location, uh, see a number of folks saying, why, why in the world would we put this at the middle school? And it starts with education. Um, we can use that location to have, it's right between the middle school and the high school, and it's the perfect location for being able to get all of those kids out there. It's a ten-minute walk from the front door of the high school to on the turf field, and that's without cutting through the woods or anything else. That's based on the current paths. And with high school classes ninety minutes long, high school kids can get out there as well for educational purposes as, uh, besides just the, the younger kids. And it's the worst field in town. I mean, it hangs down as a, is a terrible field, and we can replace the worst field in town with what would become the best. And it's just, it, it, it's just a good location, uh, for all those reasons. This is just a bit, quick picture for anyone that doesn't can conceptualize it. I don't know. Most people have probably walked past the tennis courts between the two schools in the past and probably have a good idea of how you, how you go back and forth. Um, so why now? Uh, the big, the big piece I've already mentioned, the COVID piece and everything in education tells you that the more you can educate outdoors, the better. Um, the Dunbar and, and I'll get into the, the monetary issues related to Dunbar. A lot of it has to do with Dunbar, and a lot of the money in this project would be coming from Dar, Dunbar in, in various forms. Um, Oddly Construction, I can't say enough about. Oddly is, is willing to just go above and beyond. Um, and they're willing to do all the demolition work, all the site work leading up to it, and just couldn't be nicer about helping out. And finally, all the local groups that anyone we've talked to has been interested in participating, especially the soccer club, football club, and BAC. Um, would use this field for pretty much every outdoor sport. Um, that's not unusual. If you go to most schools, you'll see lines for kind of everything on the sports to try and maximize those. Uh, obviously, there'd be Wi-Fi capabilities, sound system, things like that. Um, I mentioned their savings of, of using turf fields. So, in the spring, sports, basically, it's, it's New Hampshire, and generally speaking, there's snow or ice on the ground that you can't get outside and play for a significant period of time. Um, I know Bo youth lacrosse just paid eight thousand dollars for indoor turf time for Bo youth lacrosse to play until the fields are ready in, in late April. Um, I don't think the high school does any or much of that, but they instead practice lacrosse in the basketball, outdoor basketball parking lot, for example. But this would help alleviate that. It's also a fact that, you know, Bo's, Bo hasn't really improved its field in many, many years. And a lot of the communities that Bo is sort of associated with, they predominantly have turf fields already, uh, Hollis Brookline and, and Amherst and, and some of the others. And we talk about the educational needs, uh, and we can use that. Obviously, gym classes, science classes, like I said, those ninety-minute classes from the high school can come up and use that. Um, the vision I have for that is they have really pretty impressive-looking outdoor classroom furniture. And without a great deal of expense, we could have three classrooms out there. I picture a, a sign-up genius, where you could have teachers signing up to have their classes out there. By all accounts, outdoor learning is, is, is better than indoors. It, that surprises me. I would think it'd be distracting if you were a kid, but that, that's what the studies show. But there would just be an enormous amount of use for it for the, for the schools between seven and three. It's also a good space because they can see all the kids. They would have the Wi-Fi. The bleachers there would be for the assemblies for both the schools, and it would just be a, a great facility for, for education. Not to mention, you can use it three seasons more of the year. There's also obviously athletic needs. The vision that we've had for this would be, like I said, school from seven to three, then the school teams, whether it's the middle school or high school teams, however they work that out. Monday through Thursday would be right after school ends till about six thirty, and then the various youth programs would use it on weeknights after that, with Friday nights typically being some sort of school event. Generally, sports teams from the school don't, don't have much activities on weekends, so it'd be almost exclusively for youth sports on the weekends, and then for big events. This would be in the spring and the fall. In the summer, there actually aren't a ton of activities that Bo schools or youth programs do. And so for the most part, we would, we would look to rent out that facility as much as we could to, to offset some of the costs. So what's at all cost? So the, the big field, so it would be essentially a big soccer field. Soccer plays on the biggest field available, uh, compared to the other sports. The, a big soccer field, lights, bleachers, the turf, and then the, the facilities, you need around it, equipment sheds, scoreboards and things, is two point four million dollars. Um, we've got a couple estimates from that, and that doesn't include the, the free work from Oddly as well. And what we'd really like to do, they, in the, under the theory of do it once, do it right, we'd like to have a small practice field next to that. So we would not have water down there under that basic program. So there wouldn't be bathrooms with running water, wouldn't be a snack shack with running water. But if you get this additional small field with the water and the restrooms, that's an additional six hundred thousand for a total of about three hundred thousand dollars. The small field is, is particularly preferred by the school for the educational piece. They, they picture more of the classroom setting out there, picture more of the recess and activities in that area. And for the youth organizations, it's preferred as well. Uh, smaller kids play seven v. seven soccer. It would be a perfect size for, for the small soccer groups and, uh, small lacrosse games and things like that. So how do we pay for it? So we have a bunch of different donations from a variety of different organizations in town. You'll see Bo Athletic Clubs donated forty thousand. They're willing to donate sixty with the idea if that preferred plan goes in with the smaller field as well, they're willing to donate sixty thousand dollars for that. Then a number of, uh, different organizations are five thousand dollars as well. So we have a number of different offsets upfront that we can talk about here as well for how we pay for this. I mentioned the donations. Several individuals have donated ten thousand dollars. We have a federal grant for fifty thousand dollars for educational learning. Um, we would try and use that tied to this project. Like I said, maybe it's the outdoor furniture, maybe it's something tied to the project some way or not. If this project doesn't pass, that grant is coming no matter what. So if they build a classroom out in the woods or what have you, that, that's not necessarily tied to the program. So the Dunbar and Capital Reserve Fund is presently at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's a little complicated, but Dunbar puts money aside in a fund based on their percentage of the enrollment in the school, considered about twenty percent generally. They also pay, uh, I call it kind of a wear and tear fund per student. And it's roughly two hundred and fifty dollars per student per year for the kids that come here in seventh grade through twelfth. And so that money gets put in a capital reserve fund for whatever we want to use it for with a bunch of handicaps. The handicaps being the project has to have a value of over six hundred thousand dollars, and it has to have a lifespan of at least a twenty-five-year project, and their percentage can't exceed their percentage of the school, meaning that fund can only be used for twenty percent of, of the overall project, basically. And so right now, that has two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we would propose using towards this project. And we do understand from the, the folks at Dunbar that they are supportive of the use of those funds towards this. Not, not that they have a say in it, uh, it's just, it's interesting to know. Um, now, a hundred and forty-six thousand there, that's part of the four hundred thousand I mentioned earlier that they owe back to us. That four hundred thousand dollars is not tied to anything. That four hundred thousand dollars could be returned to the taxpayers if we want. It could be set aside for anything else we want. It doesn't have to be used for that, but that's what the school board is proposing. And then finally, for those that don't know, students at the high school pay fifty dollars to play sports per sport with a two-sport cap, so they can pay up to a hundred dollars per sport. Presently, the funds in there are about fifty thousand dollars, and the school board's already voted to do this. So regardless of whether this project goes forward or not, this turf, the field, the fees for those high school sports are gonna be now a hundred dollars for, two, per sport with a two-sport cap, which I'll talk some more about those. cap, which I'll talk some more about those in a minute. So with all those different offsets, it's not enough to pay for the project. And so we would need to have a bond for about $2 million. And so the $2 million bond would cost roughly $215,000 per year to pay that bond off over the course of 10 years. But we have some additional offsets that are $142,000 that offset the 215, making it roughly $70,000 to $80,000 per year to the taxpayer. So what are those offsets? So that sports fee account that I mentioned before, currently, that generates about $30,000 a year. Now that we've doubled that to $100, that'll generate $60,000 per year that we would allocate to offset this bond. We also have, so back to the Dunbarton Area Agreement, we've renegotiated that agreement. And in the course of renegotiating that, the fee that I said before was 250 per student is now 800 per student. And so half of that fee is not subject to those handicaps I just discussed. And so that fee generates roughly $60,000 per year. Well, now that's going to generate about $180,000 per year. $90,000 of that is available for whatever we want, and we would allocate 60,000 of the 90 towards this project. And then finally, Bo U Soccer, Bo U Football, BAC are all putting a $15 surcharge on all registrations for the next 10 years, are allocating all those funds towards this as well. We roughly estimate that to be $22,000, $23,000 a year that those youth sports are going to donate to this project as well. So all of those add up to $142,000. And if you remember what I said earlier about sort of pay to play, those folks, other than Dunbarton, are, those are things that are sort of what I would consider pay-to-play type of contributions. I know you can't see this, but the slides are available. I just wanted to keep this in here because this is the real math and the different columns, it doesn't really matter. The blue column on the far right is what the taxpayer would owe. All those other columns are the different ones I just described. So the way it would work is that the first year is just it's a $50,000 payment that we would owe, and that Dunbarton make-up payment would take care of that. The second year, that Dunbarton make-up payment, along with all those registration fees from the youth sports, would also take care of that, so still no taxpayer impact. And then the third year, because we've been collecting all of that high school sports money for these years, would be enough to take care of the payment as well. So years four through 11 would result in a taxpayer impact of $62,000 to $82,000 for the basic, for that basic plan. So for the premium, which means that you also have the short field and the restrooms and things like that, that's about another $55,000 per year. And so the taxpayer under that premium plan would be more like $120,000. So some things we didn't factor into this, we haven't factored in the sponsorship for the name of the field. Laconious Fields Health Bank, the New Hampshire Stadium, a number of fields have names like that. We are extremely confident that there are some local industries that are willing to do that, and we can't commit to that at this point. We've been told that they won't commit to something like that until it's been approved by the voters. But we do have, we're very confident that something along those lines is going to work out. Revenue in the summer, we could also generate as well. It could be somewhere from $20,000 to $30,000 a summer. Basically, Trinity and Dairy Field, they rent out their facilities all summer long, and it's about, they get about $150 to $175 per hour. And certainly the weekends, they fill that time. And then it seems like anyone we ask that wants to help out within a variety of forms always seem more than willing to do so. So we haven't taken into account any, you know, local carpenters or any of that sort of thing that may help as well. And then different venues, we could certainly get like state championships and things like that, although I don't think those actually generate a ton of money as much as people think they do, but they generally don't. So a lot of people are concerned, well, why would we do this with the Bo Elementary School renovation that we've been talking about for quite some time? And so that project hasn't gone away. What happened really to that project was COVID. I mean, once COVID came, it kind of, we're not sure what education will really look like on the other side of COVID. I mean, there's a lot of studies, a lot of different things going on as a result of COVID, but that project will be something that we will definitely have to continue to look at in the future. But a lot of these funds that are used are not funds that we would typically have associated with the elementary school. High school sports fees, that's not something we would generally put towards the elementary school. Those Dunbarton funds, you know, the Capital Reserve Fund couldn't be put towards the elementary school, and only the new ones that we've got in place could be. But we could put those towards really anything. And then, of course, like BAC and all those different activities and sports groups, they wouldn't be focused on the elementary school either. There's also some benefits to this, to the elementary school by doing this. The electrical work in particular comes to mind that would make the elementary school renovations in the future a little bit less expensive as a result, but it's not a huge impact. So I'll go pretty quickly through this because I'm going to just circle back to some of the feedback I've gotten. But it will increase taxes. $55,000 per year is about $17 on a $400,000 home. So if you have a $400,000 home, the basic and the premium plan here, as a taxpayer, your taxes would go up about $39 a year. There will be more traffic in the area if the location is busier. There's certainly going to be more noise and light. The field does have to be replaced. It comes with a warranty of eight years. They tell us it'll last 10 to 15, and it'll have to be replaced. The $400,000 figure we have there came from the turf company that's planning to build it. That's the rough estimate they gave us. Will it be $400,000? Probably not, right? I mean, inflation of things, 10 years somehow, it'll probably be more than that. So I have a conclusion that we, you know, like I said before, there is no perfect time, and we're trying to help out a segment of the community that has wanted this and wanted this to be presented for many years. And, you know, whether that's the majority of people in town, we're going to find out. But, you know, a lot of people are interested, and so we've tried to come up with what we feel is a creative way to try and have the least impact on taxpayers. And it does, you know, it is a bigger impact to those that actually are going to use the facility. Got a few other things here I'll talk about. So pushback, you know, what are the different comments that we've heard and, you know, negative or unsupportive of the project? The elementary school renovation, you know, I've already touched on that. There's certainly, at a minimum, I believe the checklist of things on there is 1.7 million, I believe, for not including an addition or anything like that. That's certainly something that we will continue to be focused on in the future. Someone talked about drinking water being more tasteful, I guess, at BMS, and we've looked at that a number of times. In fact, I would call myself the champion of that cause back in the day. And unfortunately, it's just, it's super expensive and it's exploratory to fix it. And we've been uncomfortable with making that kind of commit like hundreds of thousands of dollars to come up with a good solution. I know you're probably skeptical and saying, how can that be? Because I certainly thought, well, why can't we pay 10 grand to get it fixed? We've looked into it, and you can drink it, it just doesn't taste very good. And we've been uncomfortable with doing more with that because of the price tag and the unknown results. The BES grant I've mentioned, that, like I said, that, well, we'd like to use it for this project, that grant is here either way. That $50,000 will be used towards supporting the elementary school one way or the other. Parking, there's one person in town seems particularly focused on parking. And so we looked at the parking situation, and we have 208 spots at the middle school and elementary school parking lot. We have 468 spots around the high school, starting at the outdoor tennis courts down to the pond. And we have about, I think it's 18 spots near the tennis courts as well. That's about 700 parking spots. Hollis Brookline, very similar sized community. We've talked to quite a bit because they put in their turf field about two years ago. They have 300 spots near their stadium, which seats 1,000. Our stadium, we were looking at 700 seats. And they said they've never had more than 500 cars at an event. Hollis Brookline is very similar to us, the way their school is set up. And where their middle school is located is very similar to our middle school to our high school, and they've never had anyone park up there. It would be a similar 10-minute walk to an event. So they say it's not an issue for them whatsoever. Some feedback we've got, some people don't want those sports fees raised from 50 to $100, and they think that, some people can't afford that. And the school, anyone that can't afford it gets to play for free, anyone asks. It happens very rarely in Bo, but people can for free. As a frame of reference, I run Bo Basketball. We have 350 registrations for Bo Basketball, and every year I get three. I get roughly three people that ask to play for free. The sports fees on high school are somewhat controversial. About half the schools in state don't have any fees. We have 50. We've now raised it to 100. All those schools that I mentioned before, Hanover, Wyndham, Hollis Brookline, all those schools have a $100 fee. It's not unusual. Some folks don't want the fees to be used on this turf field project and think instead it should be more devoted to really more high school-related activities. So the athletic budget is about half a million dollars between coaches and uniforms and equipment and all those sorts of things. And so generally, if there are things for athletics that are needed, they come into that budget. Now, sometimes the athletic director will have a special project. I know there was a fence put in by the girls' soccer field in the last couple of years. And those funds are typically used for things like that, and those would not be available in the future if this was all devoted to the turf field. And so the expectation is it would continue to be in the budget. I can tell you, the athletic director said he has nothing in mind that's a big project at the time, but that's sort of just how the whole process works. Some people say they don't want to bond any money ever, don't ever bond. And maybe this is sort of the perfect bonding situation because you have a donation from a local organization, you have, you know, all these youth groups willing to donate this. They're not going to donate this money if their kids aren't going to be playing on this, on the facility. It's just, that's just the reality of those different youth organizations. And all those offsets are more than the bond cost would be in this circumstance. That's sort of the bond issue. Don't use the $400,000, pay it back to the town instead of from Dunbarton. And again, we can, we could put it towards the town, we could put it towards a lot of different things. This is just the area that we thought we would put it towards. Too many injuries on turf fields. I can tell you, Hollis Brookline has said they have not experienced that at all. Their experience has been it's indifferent. They haven't, their numbers of injuries haven't gone up or down since putting in the turf field two years ago. I can tell you, I've been to a lot of turf fields, and in my experience, I haven't seen it a higher rate than other activities. It's too hot to play on, I've heard. And again, my daughter's played in probably 110-degree weather in Delaware and Virginia in the summer and things like that, and they seem to persevere. Those are all the, all the things I've heard that folks are kind of pushing back in the project. Couple of just minutia, just fun facts, I guess I call them. Like I said, I walked this last weekend just to see how long it takes from the high school door to the field. It was 10 minutes. It's about a half a mile. Just an interesting little side note from my son, plays college football at a small school out in Wisconsin. And now my source is my son, so take this with a grain of salt. But he says they were generally just talking about playing on grass versus turf field on his football team. And he said of the 68 guys on his team, him and only one other guy have ever played on grass. All the other guys played on turf. Granted, most of them, well, all of them are not from New Hampshire. But still, just kind of an interesting fact. Of the 15 schools that have a high school in Division II football, currently six of the 15 have turf fields. I went to the Tri-County, the middle school boys semifinal basketball game last Friday, and it was at World Academy down in Nashua. And as I was driving down there, I looked to my right down in the Milliar and Manchester West, who has a turf field, was completely free of snow. There were kids out there playing football in the middle of February at Manchester West. I just, I thought that was interesting. However, this past weekend, I drove by Dairy Field, and their field's completely covered in snow. So I don't know if it's the sun or not. You can plow those fields in the winter if you want to. I think that's really all the minutia, all the different sort of pushback I guess we've heard. I just go back to, there's never a perfect time, there just, there isn't. And this is as perfect as we think it's going to get. And that's really about it. I don't know if any of you guys have anything further to add, but it's a backdrop. Okay, anyone has any questions, their microphone right back there? Sure?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just, Robert, I just have two questions. Bryce, your earlier slide indicated track use. Is there a track on this?
Yeah, the plan is to have essentially a walking track that would be three or four lanes around the perimeter of it. They, it wouldn't be like the high school track that folks have, and that track would be on the turf. So it'd just be painted lines on the outer edge of the turf field.
Oh, so you'd be running on the turf?
You would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then the second one, I just need clarification to understand the thought process behind. I'm just getting caught up with, this is the perfect time. We're going to athletics instead of academics. We know that there's issues with the elementary school regarding safety, right? Backup generator, the sprinkler system, the reconfiguration rooms, reconfiguration of the entrance. Since you did the roof and the HVAC, are those out of the question?
No, those are not out. And the idea is perfect because of the money available, the local donations, the folks willing to do it. It's not perfect, but it's as perfect as it can get. You know, this year in the budget, we have about $300,000 set aside, and we'll have another $30,000 from Dunbarton every year moving forward. And if you take that $330,000 over the next, say, five or six years, you could be, you could certainly check off all of those needs at the school. That would include a secondary access road to the school as well in those numbers. And it's for education, it's for outdoor education. I mean, it really is the turf field would be something we could use in, it extends your outdoor season by three months in both education and obviously sports, too.
That one, I'm just going to say that. I think that that's a stretch. I'd like to know, how often do we use the middle school area for outdoor stuff? Because that's what that was built for as well, right? Do we do anything outdoor there, too? That's a rhetorical question.
Yeah, but when you say do what?
Outdoor classrooms.
Yeah, there's no Wi-Fi, there's no, there's no, any sort of, not helpful.
I think when you look at the Wildcat habitat, that's a great space. I mean, you go up there on a good day, those kids are running and jumping and socializing. But you know, at this time of year, it's a mess. It's got snow and ice and mud. Same thing with the elementary school. I mean, one of the most dreaded words for an elementary school teacher to hear is, "You're in your recess today, and your backfield at the elementary school is icy and muddy and difficult to access." That's the part that I see. If the turf in the shoulder seasons, the end of fall, beginning of spring, if you can open up that half-field and get your recess, and get your PE, and get those things, those are the things that I see really adding value to the educational component. I mean, can you have some outdoor classes there? Absolutely. But the PE and recess and just getting kids outside to exercise, this field will open that up a lot more from the middle of high school.
Steve Buckley, 28, Long Island, Harvard. Point of order, the notices in the newspaper said that we're here tonight for public hearings on two bond proposals, one for $2 million and one for $584,000. I haven't heard anyone address the legal requirements under RSE 338A to clarify that's why we're here. Can someone please speak to that first?
A bond hearing is here tonight to discuss the two bonds.
Wait, but all I've heard so far from Mr. Larasbee is he's got $2 million on the agenda, not $2.5 million. So I just want to clarify, there's two bonds being proposed, one for $2 million and one for $585. Is that the correct number?
Five eight.
Well, the second field, Bryce talked about for the practice.
There are. There are two bonds on the proposal, one's for $2 million and the other is $280,000. Five eight, I mean, I'm sorry.
All right. The other thing I'd like to comment on, we have a capital improvement planning process in this town. The member on the planning, on the, the school board, Jennifer Strong-Reyn, has been on the CIP committee. I had the opportunity to go through many of the minutes and other reports. There is not even a whisper of a suggestion that this is a proposal that the town is going to undertake. Now, you do have in the CIP, the plan to renovate and improve the elementary school. And you have the plans to improve the HVAC in your different buildings. But not a whisper, not a hint that this idea was going to come to the CIP committee. I, I'm astonished that no one bothered even to mention the CIP committee, the very committee in town that's supposed to be planning for large capital improvements. I mean, I, I just kind of gobsmacked that you would think you could propose this without even going to the CIP, which I've just learned tonight, luckily, the, the budget committee has seen the light of day and they've, they've opposed this proposal. So, you know, we have priorities in this community. Number one is the elementary school. And I can't believe you would rather spend it on a turf field than the more urgent need at the elementary school and the HVAC systems that are in the CIP and have been discussed for years. But now you've got a proposal for something completely outside the boundaries of what have been discussed and considered by the CIP committee. So, you know, it's astonishing that you would come up with this idea. And I would hope the reasoned voters who would attend this meeting would say, you know, start over, come to the CIP, make a proposal. And the last thing I want to point out is the CIP report that's available does indicate in it that you have, if I understand this correctly, an athletic fields and facilities capital reserve fund. And right now, for that project in question, turf field, the number zero appears in the, in the current CIP. And I, again, would emphasize, we have a lot of priorities in this town. We need to bring water to Griponi. We need to bring water to the Tith district area. We need to complete our sewer and water systems, which are designed to improve our tax base. Those are much more higher priorities, let alone the higher priority for our elementary school, which has been on the docket for the CIP for at least eight years. So to bring this out of left field without doing the proper planning seems to be completely inappropriate. And I, I would urge this school board to say, let's drop these crazy Warren articles and not bring them to the town meeting. Because I'm very distressed that this would come out this way without even being considered through the CIP process.
Hi, I'm Judy Torian of, and I, Courier Drive. I'd like to clarify the situation around the track. So currently, the middle school does have a track and the track team is one of the larger teams. I think they run 55 to 85 students a year. It's also the only, I believe, non-cut sport, which means that it's the most inclusive of all the sports. Yet this project is talking about dismantling the track and building basically a turf running area. I don't think that that's fair to the kids who run track. It means that if they actually want to run on a track surface with the exchange zones and all the other accoutrement that go with it, they'll need to go down to the high school to practice, which means you've got, I don't know, 100 to 200 kids then trying to work around one track field. And I'm wondering if, if that's the right choice for us to be making. I haven't really studied the turf field. While you were talking, I did Google it, high school student sports, grass versus turf. And the first study that comes up is by the, the university hospitals organization. And it indicates that a study they did in 2019 says that kids on turf fields are 58% more likely to have accidents than injuries than others. I don't know, that's one study. It's just that I was Googling while sitting there. And I also don't think Odell Beckham thinks that turf fields are as good as grass.
So in terms of track, the athletic director, the principals of all the schools, they all support the project. I don't have a specific recollection of, of a plan with the middle school track team, but I'm certain it was taken into consideration.
John Karen, 24, Pudsey Road. I'm a member, not a member, elected member of the Boe trustees. And I have some, it's the first time I really had to, tonight, reading the Boe Times, digest a project that we are thinking seriously of with serious amounts of money. And as a trustee who's in chart, who's familiar with what we do with our money, I'm shocked. I'm not even aware the CIP meetings included a trustee. So the trustees would be aware of what was happening with cash in town. Proposals for bonds, which is what we primarily deal with. Nothing. My friends tell me when I don't get good information, crickets. And when I started reading this, I began to realize, all I've heard on this stuff is crickets, except for a chance meeting last Monday outside of Penarabred, where some conquered people were delighted and chastising us for the way we spend our money. Delighted and teasing me about a proposal to put in a turf field. I said, what? Who? We don't have any money for it. We haven't provided for it. And I'm going to bring back the conversation that I know Colleen will remember, I met. I went to the selectmen during an election. And I said to them, there was evidence that the town was not saving money at the rate it used to for years and years and years. With the last reduction taken by the school board, taking out 1.6 million from capital reserves, it's taken us from a high three years ago of $8 million in trust funds and reserves, down now to $5.1 million. That's a huge reduction. Do you agree, Colleen?
Yes.
And what we have saved, why hasn't this proposal been set up to be saved for? The $1.6 million that was taken out of capital funds has been known about for years, at least five years, if not more. I would take out, we cleaned out funds that have been there for years. And I know that most of you don't understand this, but in reality, that seven to eight million dollars helped fund, based on earnings, many of the projects that the town needed, which even helped control the tax rate. I'm, when I read this tonight, I was ready to have a quiet evening. I dropped my food, jumped in my clothes, sorry about the way I look, and came here. I'm sorry, but we have to step back. I'm not going to argue whether turf field is good or bad. By some place sports here, I've seen them all. I'm appalled that there's no track. Because when, now right away, the question mark goes in my head, where do you run track? Not on grass. You cannot run track legitimately on grass. Sounds like more planning needs to be done here. I would agree, it needs to go back to the CIP. Maybe this year, you ask to start a savings program for this project. Get the town's approval on it's a good thing, instead of using, forgive my word, arrogance to say, we're going to put up this $400,000 project and stick it in the budget for renovating the elementary school. $1.6 million more out of trust funds will bring us down close to $3.5 million from aid. Just at a time when we know interest rates are going to go up. Where we can be earning better money. We're not being included in meetings so that we can help. We should be at every CIP meeting to be able to obfuscate. And I have serious other questions that don't belong in this meeting, but there is things I want to know now, that you fired me up about money in the schools and future data projects unknown. But this project, the school renovation, needs to have an open, public discussion about what you want to do, how you want to do it, and what you will expect in bonds and money taken from trust funds. Not trust funds, capital reserve funding. You can't have the trust funds. I know this is outside of what you wanted to think about. My son played sports here, was a star athlete. He ran track on that field. He was seventh cross-country in the state. When I got injured, I recovered on that track. That's my thing about that. My answer to this is, am I going to say no? Because I don't know enough. I'm going to say, this is deserving of more notice, a more involved reading, where people can come and talk about what's going to be done at the elementary school, what the plan is for this, how we're going to fund it. This isn't right. And as a guy who's managed town funds for going on over 12 years, I know it isn't right. The project isn't wrong, the management is wrong, and you owe it to us as towns to do it right. Keep the taxes normal. Don't overload the burden on seniors like myself. You're already asking for big money, changes in the regular budget. And I'll be talking to them. But please, let's reconsider funding. Let's reconsider the project. And please, let's do this in a manner that's fair to the town people, fair to the children, and that focus, folks, on educating our children, that is first and foremost. Thank you for listening.
Any other comments? Nope.
Hi, Philippe Miranda from Two Abbey Road. I keep hearing over and over, no, there's very little impact on the taxpayers when you are asking for a $2 million increase on your budget. There's increase right there. And then you are taking money out of the school system to pay for this turf field. So there's impact on the taxpayer. And the impact is not $40 perhaps, it's a lot more. The taxpayer is basically funding all of it. There's very little that is not being paid, that is not being funded by the taxpayer. So don't try and sell this like, this is all easy. No, this is a $2.5 million bond that you want to put on, on the, on the town for the next 10 years, that you're going to be paying for that for the next 10 years. There's no guarantee that the funds that you say is going to offset this will last those 10 years. And you are trying to sell it as, oh, this is perfect, this is great, let's go. And I keep, keep hearing about everything that needs to be done to the schools. I heard someone talking about that you need to replace the, the high school roof and all these things that will need bonds down, down, down the line. And we are spending this money on a turf field. I don't think it's responsible. And I don't think that is good information to the taxpayer to keep telling them you are not paying for this.
Hi, Jeff Knight, Apeesley Road. Bryce, thank you very much. I can remember when my kids were young, the fields in Boe were well-used. And one time during soccer, I had to take a travel team and go knock on doors to find places to practice, because there was none. The fields in Boe have not been the greatest for a long time. Like Bryce said, there is no perfect time. But whether this project passes or not, I hope that the town will get together, and we've talked about this, Bryce and Jennifer and Colleen Hunter and myself, about fixing all the fields in town. Because we have school fields, we have town fields, but it really is one town. And we need, do need to figure out what needs to be done to all the fields and try to put some money away to fix all the fields so we have good fields for our children. Now, regarding this project, I've had conversations with Bryce and Dwayne, and they continue to do due diligence and to look into the various things. I know there was conversations about parking and wetlands. Matt Taylor was here earlier. Unfortunately, he had to go to the planning board, or I know he wanted to speak about it. The group has looked into parking issues and wetlands. They have to go before the town planning board to have a discussion what can be done and can't be done. The town planning board recommends things, but it's not like exactly the way it goes to a developer. They are non-binding recommendations. But if this project does go forward, they will have to meet any of the state of New Hampshire regulations with buffers. And they'll have to get permits for drills, fills, and dredging, any wetlands they go through. They're aware of that. As far as parking goes, they'll have to meet the state building codes, which talk about handicap access and life safety issues. They have done some of the due diligence on that. The most important thing to me is that the taxpayers have all the facts. And I think as we continue to go forward, all the facts do come out. Maybe, as this gentleman said before, it should have been presented sooner than today. But it is what it is. And the taxpayers will decide one way or another to have these fields or not. But I hope that we can, whether the field passes or not, I hope that we as a town can get together and fix all the fields in town. Thank you.
How's it going, everybody? Chris Carracosses, 44, White Rock Hill Road.
We literally just got here a couple of weeks ago, so forgive me for my ignorance. Are the fields dilapidated? The existing fields in track? I don't know. I haven't even been on them yet, so.
Yeah, it's, it's used. It's still, it's still used. I know there are certain organizations and coaches that refuse to use it. They think it's in too bad a shape. I'm not a soccer guy, so I, I'm, I'm not that. To me, it seems okay, but every, anyone I know that seems to be, know anything about soccer tells me I'm crazy and it's, it's awful.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I don't think, I don't think we can use the middle school track for competition. Yeah, they can't use that. Any competition we have has to be done at the high school track. They use it for practice, but it's pretty. That's the kind of word. Yeah, it's, it's pretty weighty right now.
Okay. I have three others, all engaged in their team. So if anyone has a stake, I guess, in a, in a new track or field, it would be myself because my kids do play sports. However, I was wondering if you guys have any numbers or done any math or any research into maintenance, annual maintenance for everything in proposing? Material supplies? I'm in the HVAC trade. They're not coming down. They're only going to continue to rise. And it sounds like you have schools that need some attention in those areas. And along the lines of a few other speakers. This is kind of a tough time to, to ask something like this. Something because we don't know where the economy is going right now. Interest rates are going to go up. And like I said, material costs, just overall cost of maintenance is going through the roof and it's not going to slow down anytime soon. So I guess I'd be curious if you guys have any hardcore numbers or estimates or anything for annual maintenance?
We do, and it's, it's, by all accounts, it's awash with what, with what, with what you currently have. So between the lawnmower gas and the time needed to do things and fertilizer, things like that, it, it doesn't save you any money and it doesn't cost any more money.
Okay, does that include the replacement? I think it said like eight years roughly, eight to 12 years it needs to be replaced with the turf, is that right?
No, no, no. That, I mean, this would be the yearly maintenance. Yeah, the, the new turf field, uh, which eventually has to come in would be what we're told, $400,000.
Right, which will go up. That's kind of my point. So I mean, maybe the, the annual maintenance stays the same, let's say. I don't know. But then you're adding another replacement turf in the eight years of that one. So it just kind of doesn't make sense to me in general, but that's all I had. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Hi, Chris Loring, Andrew Drive. Couple of questions. The $50,000 federal grant that would be used to pay for the field is, was that its intended allocation or was it originally allocated for something else?
I would not say that's being used to pay for the field. It's just something that we can maximize the use of that with the field. That, that grant can be used anywhere in the elementary school area for however they deem to use it. If this project goes forward or not, that will be used to, to create outdoor learning spaces of some sort.
So prior to this proposal, was there another intended use for that money?
It's intended to be used for an outdoor learning area. It wasn't. Fully operationalized. So where, where, where do you want to put the outdoor learning area? We haven't got that figured out yet. So it's still like it's been repurposed or something. Am I wrong or what's the name of it? Promising futures.
Is there any data to support, to support how this faculty and staff would use that outdoor space for educational purposes?
I don't understand your question.
Yep. Is, so we talked about how this, this turf field could be used for educational purposes. Has there been any, is there been any data collected, any surveys taken, any information gathered about how faculty and staff would use it and the number of faculty and staff who would use this space?
I, when the grant started, which was mid-pandemic, we had a group that was working on that. Some of the places was investigated and did not work out because it would have taken a lot of tree removal. So it is still something that we are looking at. But also a lot of it was going to be near where the turf field, where the field is.
I think you have a different question.
Yeah, I'm talking specifically with regard to the turf field. Do we know, we talked in the presentation, I heard that this would be used for educational purposes. And I want to make sure that we know that it will be.
I, I just was struggling with your question. I think I understand it now. Okay. And I think both Adam and Loring did a like a matrix on, you know, gym classes using it, recess using it. And presently, the field is actually fairly well-used by both schools as far as recess and gym and those sort of things. It's when, you know, around here that gets wet and yucky and messy, then it's hard, hard to get down there. We did a matrix, right? About.
We mapped out what times during the day we can see different classes or species occurring. So I think, for instance, I'm working in middle school. I think we can see a lot of PE classes out there. I think we can see occasional science classes going down there because it's a nice space for, for instance, we do a rocket launching day each year.
But you're not going to launch rockets up in.
There are water bottle rockets. There's no flame involved. But, you know, I think it would be more of a purpose-specific thing for the content areas more of the time. I think we use it a lot for large group space because of the wifi, because of the PA system. It's a great area where you can bring, with 700 person bleacher capacity, the whole school can fit in there really easily. And that, that would be terrific. We haven't had our whole school together in really two years. You know, so that we've been, we're getting back to doing whole grade level things, which is great. But that space would be also excellent for that. I do think it would take a burden off our custodial staff, like for instance tomorrow, tomorrow's going to be a complete mess on the playground, but it's going to stop raining so the kids are going to go outside. If it were, you know, you have a turf field, the kids can go down to the turf field for recess, you'd bring many pounds less dirt in the building. Probably not a reason to, that, that in and of itself is not the reason, you know, but to have it, but it's a nice benefit, you know? That's one of those things, it's enough, an additional add-on. So I do think we would use it a lot, but I don't know that, you know, you're not going to necessarily see math classes down there. I mean, so I don't want to, I don't want to paint the wrong picture. We would use it a lot for our PE classes. I would, I would say it will get used every day. I don't know how much it will get used every day.
And in the presentation, they also talked to the high school level, how it would be used at the high school level as well. Is there any data to demonstrate the, or any information about how it would be used at the high school level?
Well, right now, our best class is block out of the school. That's what Bryce was talking about, you know, how long it would take to get up. And they use the premier field to play on, they use the tennis courts to play on. We have a rope course out there. That would, I think that's what you're asking. That, that sort of thing would continue.
I mean, I, what I'm, what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get some clarity about that specific part about the educational use of this field at all grade levels. And so I wanted to make sure that there was, that we've done some, we've done some investigation to see that it would actually be used for educational purposes. I'm not sure if I necessarily hear that that, that, that collection of data has taken place yet. That would be a concern of mine if we're using this for educational purposes and we don't know if it is being used for educational purposes in a specific way.
Yeah, and that's why I was stumbling a little bit over your question because I can't collect data on something that doesn't exist. And so we, we've done projections, so, and stumbling over your word data. And we've talked about projections. What would the high school best classes be looking at using it? What would the middle school, the elementary school? So, so we've done those projections. I hope that answers your question.
Sort of. One last question. As a school board, do you anticipate that if, if this turf field was approved and the, and we move forward the bond, do you anticipate that this would frustrate efforts to, the, would this frustrate efforts to move forward with the capital improvements on the elementary school?
I, I, I'm not sure that we have, I mean, I'm sure if I were a teacher at the elementary school, I probably would be frustrated right now knowing that the turf field was going forward. But I also think the teachers have taken a step back and are starting to realize that the turf field, it can be an area that they use to be able to implement the instruction that they're going to be doing with their students. Have we gone out and gone to each elementary teacher and is that what you're feeling towards the turf field? No.
And so I'm sorry, I must be, I must be very unclear in what I'm asking. My question is, do you think that the taxpayers of this town will continue to support efforts like improvements at the elementary school if we also approve the bond for the new turf field?
Maybe. I mean, I, I can't speculate on what the people in town are going to do. I, I don't know what they're going to do with this.
I think, I think you have valid questions. It's just hard to, for us to answer questions that are being, they're projection questions. And it's hard for us to take any type of projection and make an, I cannot answer for the taxpayers.
Dr. Cascaden, you're a very well-educated man. Are there ways in which we could get that data in order to help us make the determination as to whether or not this is in the best interest of our town?
Again, I'm struggling with your word data because you're making, this is a value decision. If I have the liberty to share a couple of things, let, let me just share my heart. I'm going to retire in a year and a half and as I get older, I, I tend to just share my heart. 25 years ago, this town built this, this school here. And it is a darn good facility. And the minute I got here, 16 years ago, I heard about the Taj Mahal built at the high school. Oh, we way overbuilt this place. You didn't. You built a good, solid facility. This auditorium has served this town well. The whole campus have served this town well. You've got plenty of fields here. It's been a really good, solid school. There are a couple of things that you probably overbuilt, like on top of my office is a greenhouse. I don't think that's ever been used. Okay? There's no pool on the roof. That's just something they, they tell the freshmen, don't worry about that. There's a drop in the physics room, which is really cool. Chris and Amy kind of put that in together. But pretty much you've built a good, solid facility here that served the town well. And it took vision to do that. It took people kind of getting together and saying, hey, let's do this. Right before I got here, the middle school was rehabbed. And you know what? It was great in the sense that they did everything they needed to do to the systems. But if they would have put a little bit more money into it, you would have dealt with the rabbit war and the jab for the offices. And you would have dealt with all that tile and the problem that you walk in and it's all over the place. Great renovation in the sense of the systems and so forth. And then I look at the elementary project and we had teed up right before COVID. And I think what people were tripping on, on that project, it was easy to look at the roof and say, yeah, we need the roof, we need the HVAC, which we did. But I think they were tripping on like the addition and some of the safety stuff and so forth. And, and that's still going forward. I mean, you, you did the HVAC, you did the roof. You gotta go underneath that now and do the controls, get into the sprinkler system and so forth. But, but that's going to be a major project. We got the phones in this year into the budget. The maintenance go around here is great. They've been chipping away at building cubbies and doing all this sort of stuff. So I, I don't, I don't know how to answer your question because when we come to these big projects, you know, there's always an issue and there's always a problem. This is really an interesting thing here, this turf field. It will add value to this community. It will add a lot of value. This community really doesn't have a town center. I mean, it has the sliding hill, it has the, the gazebo and so forth. I see this as a big kind of issue for you, thing for your town center. Now, if it doesn't happen, is, is it Armageddon? No, we'll continue to play on the fields, fields that we have. So I don't know what this town will support. I've been here for 15 years. I know they've passed budgets, they've passed teacher contracts. They've really supported the schools well. I'm very thankful for all that. But when it comes to buildings, I can't predict for you. And I'm sorry if I stepped over my bounds and answered any question.
No, thank you very much. And thanks for highlighting the need for additional capital improvement in the, in the district.
Jeff Knight again, Apeesley. One thing has come up a couple of times is capital reserve funds. Unfortunately, back in 1999, there was no money set aside for any of the fields that the school has or this particular project. And had we put money aside, you know, $100,000 a year or something like that, we probably wouldn't be having a bond hearing tonight. It is what it is. Are there more capital reserves that probably need to go into the school? Yes. Every year, the Capital Reserve Committee, which I'm a member of, talks about it. I think last year and this year, we estimated, we suggested that $500,000 be put aside. I think this year, the school board has suggested 300,000 instead of 500,000. There is no money set aside to replace the roof on this building, which is 25 years old. Like Dean said, there is no money set aside for HVAC. There's no money set aside for parking lots. So in general, the capital reserve funds for the schools, whether you talk about the high school, the elementary school or the middle school, don't have enough money in them. And when you don't put money aside year after year, then you come up with things that need to be done and you're going to have to bond for them, whether it's a turf field or whether it's a renovation for the elementary school. So one of the things that we need to do and focus on in the future is to put more money aside in the capital reserve funds so we don't have to bond projects. Thank you.
I'll be brief this time. One more, they had just took your meds and I ran through the warrant articles. All of them must spend new options or bondage, except one. One of them calls for $300,000 to, um, I get the right wording here? And this is interesting when I read it. $300,000 to be added to the existing Bow School District Building Construction Capital Reserve Fund. Established in March of 1992. That fund's been around forever. Now, realistically, all right? Realistically. The Bow School District Building's Construction Capital Reserve. So there's no specificity about that capital reserve. It's a slush fund. So if we need to do this project, we can go over here and take it out of there, which causes us not to keep track of where we're spending our money. It's poor budget. $300,000 should be put in there for a reserve fund for the elementary school renovations. And it should be duplicated every year until you have at least half of it. In the time it took to build. The fire station, police station combination. We saved in cash almost the money to pay for it. Planning makes the success, costs less, keeps the tax rate, tax rate down. And that is essential. And Dr. Cascaden, the people in Concord still call it the Taj Mahal. I have to correct them regularly. This is a beautiful school you are correct. It was well thought out and well put together. But I don't know how many years ago it was now. But that's all I got to say. Be specific about where you want the money to go. Don't make it a slush fund. Because I remember back 16, 15, 16 years ago, when that fund was 500 million, it wasn't, excuse me. It was $500,000. And it was split and repurposed. And at that time, I thought that was illegal. I checked with people after, afterwards, and I was agreed with. Make your request specific where you want the money to go. Want to build that field? Build it, please. Put a track on it. You gotta find a way to do it. Or else it's just a football, soccer, lacrosse field. And I coached lacrosse fields teams on the Memorial Field School, field going down back. That's not fit for anybody to play sports on. We did. Team was correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Steve Buckley, 28, Plum Hill Road. I agree with the superintendent. These are excellent schools. Both of my children graduated from Bo High School. They're very successful human beings because of the great teachers and the school board and what you've put into the school. I agree with that 100%. Just two other points I want to make. When the high school was approved, we also approved a separate warrant article to build an extra number of fields. So we've already, some time ago, devoted considerable town resources to athletic fields. Second thing I want to ask, a question, three years ago, we approved a warrant article to allow the school to retain fund balance. So my question is, what is the fund balance as of June 30, 2021? And why aren't, if you've got fund balance, turning to the fund balance how to offset this proposal, which, again, I think is a bad idea, but just curious what you have in fund balance?
The school district never passed that one.
So you're still not collecting fund balance? Okay. I thought you did.
It all goes back.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, for me, the other thing that's, and we partied a lot tonight, the limiting factor is water. I mean, you know, the premier field has water, right? You've got a separate well for that. We can irrigate that. You gotta rest it, you know, in the summer, which it does. It grows back, it does pretty good. Most high school fields, where, why are we not irrigated at the high school?
Softball, soccer, JV field up there, and none of the fields in the middle.
Yeah, and none of the middle fields have, have water. And that's the real thing, that's the real limiting factor of, of trying to, you know, grow the grass up at, up at the middle field. It's the water. And, you know, and that's, I mean, Todd, if you know Todd and Rancy, their characters, they, they put a lot of time into fields. They, they try to maintain them, they, they try to really work hard at them to get them where they are. But if you don't have water, you can't grow grass. The turf field, we see that, that the proposal has the machinery needed. You gotta beat the field every once in a while, I forget whether, whether it was, but you gotta get beaters out, because the field's got like fingers in it, and those fingers hold little pieces, parts, little like rubber and so forth, and that's what provides the cushion. So you gotta beat them to fluff that out. And then the interesting thing for me was, those beaters have magnets on them, because I guess people lose coins all the time in the field. So maybe that's where we get the maintenance money from, we collect all the points. But that's kind of the maintenance on the field. And then, of course, you'd have to see, what do you do as far as, you know, re, keeping the field free of, of, of snow in the winter? I imagine there is a trade-off. I mean, you can't get on there and plow it with plow, because that's going to beat the heck out of it. But I know when I used to live in Bristol, I, I'd drive home and I'd look left going by the New Hampton Field, and it would be about this time where it was all cleared off and kids were playing. And I really see, that's, that's it. Get out there early in the spring, stay out there later in the fall, and that, and that helps out with that. Sorry, I started to run.
Brian Calso, Fort Timmins. I think the, the educational component of this may be viewed as, as being a stretch. But I, I know my youngest son, six years old, and I, I remember the, the last parent-teacher conference I went into. The teacher said, "He's got a lot of energy." And, and we know that. And she said, "But the worst is, is, you know, this time of year." It was October, November, and it was rain and it was cold, and they couldn't let the kids go out. And she said, "You wouldn't, you'd be surprised at how much a classroom shrinks when the kids can't go out for their normal recesses." So, yeah, I, I mean, in addition to the, the component, the utility component, I mean, I'm on the BAC board, I'm, I'm in favor of this because I see my son play on that field, the, the BMS field. I, they also play on Gosling, which is substandard. We've done BAC, Bo, everyone has done as much as they could to try to help that limp along into a, a real field, and it's, it's not. And a lot of it is because we have a large town playing on one, one field. So the, the utility component of a turf field, I think, is, is underlooked. People hear turf, they think vanity, this is utility.
Hi, Mike Wheeler. How many employees does the town have working on the fields in the grounds department at the present time?
We, the school.
School, yeah, how many, how many, how many employees?
We have, we have two. We have two.
Are they full-time?
Yep. And they also do all the snow removal, and they're general grounds guys as well.
How much snow removal do they actually do? Do they plow the driveways?
Nope, drive, we don't have to help everybody. But driveways are planned, the, the main parking lots are plowed by the town, they clean it up at the end.
So, so that group basically just has the walkways around the doors, that sort of thing?
Yep.
Okay. Now, mowing and so on and so forth, do they mow all the, the fields on all three schools? Maintain them all?
They, they mow the whole, the whole field and the end on grounds.
On all three schools? All right, and now their budget is somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 a year, correct?
I may have to ask the money guy about that.
That's what it says in the town report. $448,000 in 2019. I'm sure it's known how.
All right.
Okay. So, this new turf field, how many more employees are you going to add to maintain this turf field?
I, I don't foresee anymore.
It's gonna, it's gonna maintain itself?
Well, you're mowing it now, and you're, you're maintaining with those guys, it's a different maintenance program.
So you're gonna add?
Flop it up.
You're gonna add three or four more months worth of time? Are those two men going to be able to completely do all this work by themselves?
I, I, my answer would be yes.
I mean, according to all the stuff I've heard and read, they're having a difficult time keeping up with what they've got, and the fields are in the most abysmal shape of any place in the entire country, I've heard. So, so what sort of job are they doing now?
But there are town fields that people are also discussing today.
No, I'm talking about the school field. The way it was written, the, is, the, the fields are out, they're in worse shape, they're abysmal, that I didn't fit to play on. That's what, that's what I've been hearing. So why haven't they been maintained so far? At a half a million dollars a year, you can't maintain a few fields? I mean, a half a million dollars a year over the next 10 years, that's $5 million. So you're talking about a $3 million field, you're going to spend $5 million just in maintenance without even having a field. So how much more is it going to add to maintain this field? Don't tell me that field isn't going to cost zero to maintain. Silence, why is it silent?
We're not, we're, we never said they were going to cost zero. Well, we
I heard a little while ago say that it would be a moot point.
It would be a little
It's a wash.
A wash, yeah, a wash, that means zero. Zero is a wash.
If the budget's $400,000 now, our expectation will be $400,000 next year and the year after that.
Then how are they going to maintain the field with the same amount of money, same amount of men? How are they going to do that? It's impossible.
I don't.
You don't know?
You're replacing a grass field with a turf field. So instead of maintaining the grass field, you're going to maintain a turf field. Isn't that similar work?
You got bleachers, you got concession stands, you've got all this other stuff that goes with it. Like I said, convince me that that thing is going to maintain itself for free.
Wendy Gazaway, Three Fessent Drive. I heard this proposal a while back because I'm part of the Booster Club. At that time, I had my Booster Club hat on, and we, as a club, decided not to put our support behind it because of feeling like it really was not going to benefit the high school athletes, because that's really where we focus, is trying to do the things that aren't funded through the budget that we want to support our teams in. For example, we helped support the new wrestling mat that is going to be used this weekend at the state championship meet here in Bo, which is awesome. We helped fund a new timing system for the track, which means we can have more competitive track meets at Bo High School, which is great, which means their times will be better qualified for state meets. All this to say is that I've been paying into these fees that now it appears are not used in terms of my sons' place athletics here. I pay my amount, and I'm being told that all of that money can just be sent into a savings account because we're not using it for anything. At the same time, I'm having coaches come to the Booster Club saying, "Hey, can we have $2,500 for a timing system?" And we work our butts off to raise that money to support our athletes. There seems to be a disconnect in what the fees that have been collected have gone to previously and where all those funds are, if we can now double it and say it can all go to a turf field. The other part I have is I do have a track athlete in my home. He excelled in middle school. There is no way I could have gotten a freshman boy to go out for track his first year of high school. It was not going to be the thing for him. Because he started in middle school and excelled, he went to the state championship meet his freshman year, the only freshman from our school to go. So I think we are devaluing one team of athletes to value another team of athletes. My final point is, we have commitments, or we've been presented that Bo Athletic Club has commitment, the Bo Youth Football and the Bo Soccer Club all have committed to doing a surcharge to these families in town. First of all, at least for the BAC, none of those winter events are going to benefit from these, yet they're going to get charged, the $15 surcharge, is my understanding from what was presented. So then Bryce has been on the BAC board for many years, but the turnover rate on these boards is not 10, 15 years, it's four years while my kid is doing it. So what happens seven years down the road, when someone makes the motion, "We don't want to do these $15 surcharges anymore, it's costing the families and the athletes too much." There's no guarantee, there's no contract in place between these clubs and what they're saying they're going to do and the long-term aspect of this project. So I don't feel like using those funds as a, "Well, that's how we'll pay down the bond" is really appropriate, because we don't know how those clubs are going to act, what their passions are going to be, where they might want to raise funds for going down the road.
We do actually have a memorandum of understanding that is a document that's being signed by all the different entities. You're absolutely right, the board does have a turnover. In theory, you could sue BAC, I guess, down the road if they stop putting in those fees. But I, I'm confident that the organizations that commit to do that will, will continue with it.
All right, I guess, do we need a motion to close the?
You do need to close the bond hearing so we can have our school board be
Excellent, file a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Great, thanks for coming out, appreciate it. Always appreciate feedback.